Well, here we are.
Commissioners, commissioners.
Calling out commissioners.
Commissioners, we are called to order.
I see one.
Okay, why don't we in the interim convene for our next meeting and continue that?
Mr. Chairman, we have a meeting scheduled for 1:00. I would move-
So we are, we have a 1:00 meeting to discuss a possible decision regarding an investigation of the treasurer's office. I'll call that meeting to order.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we continue that meeting till the conclusion of this meeting.
I'll second that.
We move to second to continue the 1:00 meeting till the conclusion of the 11:00 meeting. Any discussion? Any public comment? All is paid in motion, signify with a "aye."
Aye.
Okay. I think civil counsel and Commissioner Burrows are conferring right now. So at this point, we'll go ahead and open up board, some board discussion.
Mr. Chair, yes?
Suzy.
The biggest thing right now, I think, is that the law is at best ambiguous. And so without, I mean, I, I think that for myself, I'm looking very much to our civil counsel to try and point us in a direction that we can feel we are doing the right things under the right jurisdiction to have the least amount of opportunity for a bad result for this, for the entire county. But I think we do all recognize that we have a lot of issues that need to be addressed. Since we're waiting, if it's all right, I'd like to at least give my feeling on how we-
You have the floor.
Okay. I've been very clear for weeks now, as has others, all of our board. There's many, this is a multi-layered, it's like an onion, there's a lot of layers to it. And some of them are interrelated and some are totally different. What we want is to get to the truth of the matter. Yes, we have some real concerns and we had, we had options and restrictions that were fairly limited when we were addressing who's going to be our next treasurer. We did the best job we could with the information that was at hand. That whether or not Ms. Stamey can do her job or not is, is a very definite issue. There's also issues of that we are contemplating now looking for a fifth treasurer in three years. So there's something systemic that appears to have, an issue that also needs to be addressed very thoroughly. Because I have citizens who had come to me and it had been brought to my attention on some court action on the tax assignments, that's an issue as well. We just need to make sure that our citizens are protected moving forward in how that is handled and if there's any other improprieties, not, not purposeful, but it was a new, something new to our county, but whether it was handled properly or not, we need to find out and we need to make sure that everyone's made whole and corrections are made. So we have a whole lot of levels. And then another one is, this is a new situation for our county. Our county has not had a situation of appointing someone who, in a situation like this. And so addressing how this ever is done in the future, because it may happen again, I don't know how old our county is, it probably has been a year old or something. Seems like we need to address that in the future when we are looking at appointing anyone where there's going to be fiduciary responsibility, that there's a deeper research than what's in the mechanism that we dealt with. And also that we look at who is or is not bonded in our employment. So there's just a lot of, of business issues that we need to take care of as well looking forward. So lots of issues, but the reality is, is that what we want is what's best for the county and the citizens that we serve. And that has been the goal of this board and certainly my own, despite whatever's been said.
Mr. Soul.
Well, I have some concerns on lots of things. My biggest thing is, and I've been trying the best too, we need to get this department back up and running, however we need to do it. That is my greatest concern and that's what I think we need to move ahead on doing. We can't keep it in this turmoil the way it is right now. So that's what I got to say. We need to move ahead on figuring out how to get this department back up and running, however it needs.
Mr. Burrows.
I did vote for Valerie Stamey's appointment to the interim treasurer, or the treasurer position. I did not base my vote on political, personal, or ideological reasons. And hopefully to reassure that with, with the concerns of all of our citizens, I would make a motion to place the treasurer on administrative leave with pay pending an investigation into whether additional action should be taken.
I'll second that.
Can you repeat your motion?
No.
We'll, we'll discuss that in two minutes.
My motion was to place the treasurer on administrative leave with pay pending investigation into whether additional action should be taken.
I'll second the motion.
I second.
And, and for discussion on the rationale for my motion is that I do not feel like there's a statute that we can stand on at this time that allows us to suspend, to fire, or to do anything else with pay. So at this time, I felt that we went through some different, without pay. We went through a bunch of different statutes to allow us, based on different, different things put in motion like this official misconduct charge, that we may be able to utilize a different mechanism through statute. But at this time, I do not see that any of these, these statutes would apply without different processes in motion. So that is the rationale and the reason for my motion. I think that's the only, the only action at this time that we can stand on, so.
Glenda, you have the motion. Will you read it back, please?
I'd place the treasurer on administrative leave with pay pending an investigation for any additional action to be taken.
Okay. Everybody clear on the motion? All right, any more discussion?
I have one. Mr. Chairman, the, I agree with the motion, first of all. And the only clarification I have is that our next meeting will involve, or may involve presentation that while probably not changing our action, will give us more direction on how this might work. And in this particular situation, the next discussion will have to do with the fact, independent of the commissioner's action, a possible action through the county attorney's office will be discussed. So that's, come on this particular situation.
All right, I, I, just for clarification, I saw the news last night, saw the email from our honorable county attorney indicating the investigation of the treasurer's office and indication, investigation on the allegations made by the treasurer on Tuesday. So that, that action seems to be well underway. I think there'll be maybe some discussion on that. It's going to be independent of this body. And if I understood it correctly, it's also intended with county attorney or the county sheriff. It's going to be an independent audit and investigation. So our citizens rest assured that what comes out of that is going to be the truth, the whole truth. And I know that the members of this body have all embraced that happening. I will point out that there's been a lot of action and some have implied that the commission has been sitting around, their fingers crossed, looking through rose-colored glasses, wait for this to get better. That's not been the case. There's been a lot of effort by members of this body to find a way to make a change, find a way to make things better, to explore all of our options. And I readily admit, not all of us were looking at the same options, which makes a board work. We're looking out from different perspectives and, but all looking for the same outcome of getting the taxpayers' dollars handled properly, expeditiously, and efficiently and into our, our districts and our partners' hands, our other agencies, and our offices as well. So that being, it's not easy. I don't care if you're an employee or an elected official or an appointed official. It's very difficult in government. I think anybody that serves on a school board knows how it works with a tenured teacher. When you are a government employee, due process is foremost. And due process becomes a little, little harder to define when we're talking about elected officials or appointed. And there's been a lot of effort to try and make this office successful in the last four months, a lot of effort. It was brought up today that we allowed the expenditure of over $2,000 of unspent salaries and wages, money or funding created by vacancy savings to try and make some improvements down there for the short term and to free up some of our more experienced staff to get things done. Yeah, I think this body's been over backwards to try to make the operation down there very successful. But what we have here today is, and I, I admit, the board did not send a letter to the treasurer. I sent a letter last week. I did share the letter with as many board members as I could prior to its issuance. And due to the breaking story in the Bitterroot Star on South Carolina default judgment and the aftermath of that, it became evident that there was concern about the public trust of the person handling the money from the taxpayer. That was a concern. We, I asked, not we, I asked for more information. Give us the whole story, give us the rest of the story as Paul Hardman reported. Instead, we got no response. Instead, we had allegations, broad, broad allegations, vague allegations. Actually, if you read it, other than an inflammatory, false statement credited to me in a conversation with JR, and I can categorically state that that is untrue, there was nothing. We've talked about missing files. We don't know what files are missing. There's been nothing that I'm aware of, and I don't think any member of this board has seen, saying the files from this account, that district, whatever, are missing. On, we have, we don't have any of that data. We have broad statements of corruption and missing files and just, so I'm, I'm frustrated. And then absolutely no response to our request, no response to this meeting. And I support the motion. And I, we've got to do something. And I appreciate the making. That being said, any other?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Burrows.
I think some discussion we should have would be the timing of this, this administrative leave then. Would that be, I guess we can talk about the effect immediately?
Effective.
Immediately. Okay, so I would like to add that to my motion then, that that would be, place the treasurer on administrative leave immediately with pay.
And I, I would recommend if we ask, since we've got the sheriff here, to go down and just so there's no question, there's no allegations coming out of that, be gone there.
Okay, I didn't hear what you said. Should the sheriff do what?
To go down and assist. So that nobody can say, oh, this turned up missing or whatever. We have the sheriff or this doesn't need down there. So, can you see? So, here's a second.
Yes, Sheriff.
Robert? Would you go down with the sheriff?
Certainly.
Okay, we'll take public comment. Is there any other board discussion? So we're clear on the motion?
Yes, we're clear on the motion.
We've got two amendments. Open up for public comment? Or did you have something?
You know, I just want to state what Jeff said. This is a campaign, big shock. It's real easy to take something like this and turn it, try and make it into a political situation that's really campaign. And I say those people say that, same on you. You're accused-
Please, let's, let's treat everybody with respect in this room.
It's very obvious that everybody has strong emotions and strong loyalties to their belief systems and their parties. That is not a part of our hiring. My decision-making, I don't know, I don't ask, it's not in our questions. I don't know the people who come in front of us. I might know one person is of a political persuasion or a certain faith or whatever else you want to ask about, but we don't ask that. It does not have a place in this business. And you can make the accusations you want. All I can tell you is, I do not make, and I don't know of any other board member who ever lets that come into the discussion or how they make the decision. In a, in a department as important as the treasurer's, how dare any of you, frankly, make such foolish accusations? That we would be in this office and make a decision? Does somebody understand that it is an elected position and they will have to run? That's what we asked and both said affirmative. No, I don't have any idea what our employees' political persuasion is. Those who I've hired, I've hired, the people that I've hired who happened to be Republican, if they were the same people they could have been on the, the Purple Party. It was based on their ability. So I'm going to ask you, as the press at least, to have the understanding that there is a certain ability for people to put their feelings aside on whether they're left, right, green, purple, or whatever, and go for the right person. And that is what I believe this board does.
Would you repeat your motions before public comment so we can let public comment? Oh, Glenda, would you repeat it?
You want to start at the beginning?
I saw that.
Okay, it was to place the treasurer on administrative leave with pay pending an investigation for additional action to be taken. Commissioner Foss seconded.
Glenda, one addition to that was, could you please add immediately in there?
Yeah. Well, I haven't gotten there yet.
Oh, sorry.
Then Commissioner Burrows made an amendment to place her on administrative leave immediately. Commissioner Foss agreed with this amendment. Then it was a discussion about the sheriff going down to assist. Commissioner Burrows amended that to his motion. Commissioner Foss seconded that, another friendly amendment. And for Robert to go down with the sheriff.
Thank you. So now we'll take public comment. Start with Michael.
I'm not in favor of this motion. I heard the county attorney's office give you advice about the cleanest, clearest way to suspend your treasurer. And it was the way suggested by the Bitterroot Star. You file a suit alleging misconduct. That allegation is based on two, three violations of the law that are of public record, and you've heard all the school districts screaming about it. He has failed to file the reports required by law. That's a violation of the law, three of them, four of them, clearly violations of the law. I think you should ask your attorney right now if he believes that that's a, a violation of the law. And if it is, it's official misconduct. And the cleanest, clearest way to suspend the treasurer is to file that today, tomorrow in district court. She is suspended then until a proper investigation is done. And when she's cleared, she can be reinstated to office.
Thank you, Michael. Kathleen.
Kathleen Driscoll Hamilton, President. My question goes to the fact that she named names when she made her statement the other day. I'm curious if there can't be a clarification on the fact that is she outside her, you know, spectrum of her job? So that, that means that she will not be protected by taxpayer lawyers, you know, by Mako? Can you answer that, Bill? And I'm just asking, and if you don't know, could you find out? Because I know in the past we had that situation and people were protected and it shouldn't have been protected, and taxpayers' dollars again protected somebody that was outside, what they were paid to do and what their job distribution included. So I just want clarification of that, because I don't want the county opened up to-
Are you not clear what you're saying?
Okay, so what I'm saying is, okay, when somebody's sitting in those seats and you do something that's out, you threaten a, a person that works for you, Mako doesn't necessarily cover them for the lawyers.
You're talking about outside your role and scope?
Right. So what I'm worried about and concerned about is the amount of monies that may be paid out, out of our pocketbooks toward protecting her after she's done this, if she's, do you see what I'm saying? I don't want to go into details, I just want to know, is this going to be a Mako thing where they're going to come in and we're not going to pay? I think it's still $10,000, the checks are written, okay? The amount of money that-
Why do you?
Okay, so there's an amount, we have Mako, who have attorneys who protect things in our county. And it goes outside your office and goes up to Mako. What I'm curious about is because she's said some really inflammatory things about people who work for the county, that I would believe would be threatening and detrimental to those people who work for the county. So I'm concerned about, are they going to protect her and our taxpayers and Mako? And you're smiling, Bill, but I really am concerned about this. Do you know that?
Sorry, I'm not smiling.
Okay.
I just came from the dentist, to be honest with you.
It has a smile by itself.
And Howard and I just spoke quickly, I'll let him articulate it.
You see, I'm, I'm asking, Bill. You understand?
I do understand what you're asking.
I, I, I'm sorry, but we didn't answer Michael's question until, we'll do, we'll take public comment.
Okay, so that's my question, and that's what I'd like to answer. Thank you.
Public comment, please. Any other public comment? Larry?
Yeah, I'd just like to add to the comment I made earlier at the 11:00 meeting, which is that I know several or more of you ran on a platform of fiscal responsibility, and now we have this fiasco in the treasurer's office. And to my mind, the idea of paying her while what needs to be done is debated and is strung out for who knows how long, really adds to the joke that fiscal responsibility has become in this county. I would like to know if there's any options, well, like Michael just brought up one, that could be, it sounds like a matter of a day or two, that she might get paid today, but maybe not tomorrow if a suit could be filed. I'm wondering if there's an option to revisit the appointment, which to me seemed to have been made recklessly. There was malfeasance shown in looking at her background. I don't know if there's a way to revisit the appointment that might short-circuit the need for even a suit. But I just basically don't believe she should be paid while the fiasco that she's created gets debated and strung out indefinitely.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I saw a hand back there. Brent?
Good day, by the way, the walk, walk up. Seems to be there's a, there's a thing here to get fired for, we've been losing employee supervisors who did good for the county. And he did it because he lied to you. Now you have the opposite thing. I've seen you fight, you fight to keep her. Thank you.
Yes, please.
Daryl. I just want to say briefly that I think that there's- Daryl Poole? Uh, just, I think that there's two extremes here, to do nothing and to, you know, really come down on Valerie, I don't know how else to put it. And I think that your caution is commendable. I would say that you're doing the right thing here. Thank you.
Mr. Shockley.
Mr. Chilco. Chairman Shockley. I'm not here as a partisan of Ms. Stamey, but I don't see how you can suspend her without pay. If you suspend her without pay, you're supposing that she's guilty. And I just don't think that's fair, and I don't think that's how this county up in mind.
Thank you. Chris.
I would be interested, Chris Ockman from Hamilton, I would be interested in the opinion of counsel regarding use of the official misconduct 457401, which Mr. Howell advocates the use of. It, on reading, simple reading of a layman, it would seem that, given that at the end of this process, if she was, if there was, if Ms. Stamey was found to be perfectly right, she would be least injured and then she'd be returned to her position. So I would be curious as to what the counsel's opinion is regarding how that would help in the event of a wrongful termination suit or some other follow-on, which we are, we are usually concerned with when we take, when the board has actions, it seems as you are. That was one, one opinion I was seeking.
And that, I believe you asked the same thing, Mr. Howell, I have some-
I, I think so. But I'm trying to bring the point that it seems like it, in the long run, it might put you in the best position to defend against a long, a settlement perhaps, about your actions today. I was just, I was looking for an opinion from counsel on how that would play out perhaps. And I have a separate question, two separate questions regarding the, the statement and report of our Valley County Treasurer of, earlier this week, in which she made allegations. It indicated that I have contacted and I am requesting a full investigation by the Feral Bureau of Investigation. I am curious if the county attorney's office has confirmed the existence of a preliminary for field investigation on the part of the FBI. And secondly, in the, in the January 22nd letter from the county attorney to the board commissioners, it indicated that I expect that two components of this investigation will be, one is the audit, the two is an investigation into all allegations made by Ms. Stamey during her public meeting on Tuesday, January 21st, 2014. I am curious, what does the county attorney's office consider to be all allegations? Because I, I am having trouble-
Chris, we'll take that up in the next meeting, okay?
Oh, thank you. They're on meeting, sorry.
That's okay. It's all kind of snowballed together, hasn't it? Public comment.
I was just a little bit confused about the presentation here, as far as some of those codes seem to apply to an appointed official and some apply to elected officials. It's not clear to me whether Valerie Stamey has been-
It was Michelle Pope.
Michelle Pope. Determined to be appointed or elected. Which one is she, or is she a combination of both? Which rules apply to her? Just curious.
We've been curious about that, too. We'll try to get back to that.
Okay, but in the future, it will probably be nice to delineate those two when hiring, right? Who you are, you appointed, you're elected, that sort of thing. And I wonder if there was, since this motion was made to suspend her, is there a plan in place for an interim treasurer?
The motion was not for suspension. Administrative leave.
Administrative leave, okay. So for the interim time, is there a plan for a treasurer to be in place?
That's the next step.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I saw another hand up there. Ed?
Ed Eubner. I guess that, you know, there is a learning curve in any new position. She'd never been a county treasurer before, so the duties are going to be different from the other positions that she has held. the other positions that she has held. Apparently, from what I've read, there were no checklists written down areas of responsibility for the different positions, and when she requested help, she didn't get it, those three people quit, and it appears to me that was probably a lot of the corporate knowledge in the Treasurer's Office. And it appears to me that the official misconduct that we're talking about is failure to get out certain reports, not getting money dispersed, but no, nothing has been said about her personally taking money or anything like that. So, you know, we just brought in, what, three new people to help down there? Now, it is not quite beyond me as to how removing somebody who in the last four or five months has learned a lot about her position and is able to do some of these things...
Please.
How removing somebody, and now we're one more short in the Treasurer's Office? And then it came up, Mr. Menon, about what do we do about a treasurer? Who's in charge down there? So that's my public opinion.
More public comment? Paul?
Paul Spoh. It's commendable that you, moderating on your position as to how you're going to deal with Valerie Stamey, assuming that you vote and pass this motion that you made. I'd like to recommend that either along with this motion or following this motion, you put in place people who can at least cause that office to function in the interim. We have several different departments that are waiting desperately for communication and instruction on what to do and how to go forward. And I think it's the responsibility of this board to see to it that, in spite of where Ms. Stamey goes, that department functions and moves forward. So I would ask that we don't leave this room until we settle that issue also. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any more public comment? Mayor?
Gene Dinmac, Mayor of the Thomas Stevens. I guess I'm on the side of Mr. Howell with regards to that I don't, I would disagree that maybe it's your clearest action, as your county attorney has pointed out to you. At the same time, I think that you've given yourselves an avenue for corrective action, and I would like to thank you for doing that. I would support the fact that you've decided to take an action that you feel is in the best interest of the county and the people involved, because you added a very important point, pending further investigation. You have substantive facts before you could consider, I'm sure with your county attorney you'll be able to investigate them, and that is the most important point for me going forward. So I can support your motion to do something in the interim, because you followed it up with a decision that says, and we will continue to investigate this pending further action. Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment? Is there any more public comment? Teresa.
Teresa Manzella, Hamilton, Montana. One of the founding principles of our great nation is that we are all innocent until proven guilty, and that goes for you, and that goes for Valerie, that goes for all of us. That's one of the blessings that we have been blessed with. My question is, if you remove Valerie from her office, how do we maintain the integrity of the investigation? Since she is the one who has been responsible for bringing the allegations forward and the missing files, what's to say that more files will not come up missing? How will we preserve what she refers to as a crime scene?
Thank you, Teresa. Is there any more public comment? Any more public comment? All right, board deliberation. Do you have a couple of questions for Howard? Do you remember that? I thought the question of misconduct was answered in the prior discussion, but do you want to recap it?
Yeah, I don't know that I have much more to add on that particular issue. We talked about the statutes, projected them on the boards. One of the questions was about Maco, and Maco, under the insurance policy, would have a duty to defend. If it was established that communications made by the treasurer were not privileged, then it could at some point make a decision that it no longer has that duty, or that duty is modified. But until there was a judicial determination of that, it would have a duty to defend.
Okay. Mr. Stolls.
I'm going to vote for this motion because of the update on Tuesday, we did not get one, and some of the statutes looks like we should have, and I think that we need to have an investigation among that party, and so I support this motion.
Thank you. Other comment? Mr. Murrow.
Mr. Chairman, I would just like to go over again my rationale for the motion, as it, I don't think we've any way, I think Valerie is going to have an opportunity to address these allegations, so I don't think they're going to counter her guilty of anything. There was talk of fiscal responsibility among us, and that was the whole reason for the motion, the way I made it, was because I want to limit any liability to the taxpayers for anything we do up here. So that was the reason for my motion, the way I put it. I know there's a lot of emotion here, and there tends to be this, we want her gone now, but fiscal responsibility was the reason I put the motion the way I did it.
Why, second?
Okay, and I guess that there was a question brought up as to, you know, how come we don't give it more time? It's a complicated job, and there's a big learning curve, and I guess part of that is, how long of a curve do we provide for? The other part of it is that when we take applications for positions in the county, whether they're pointed to an elective office, or a position in the sheriff's office, or any other department in the county, they know what the job description is. And this job description is readily available online. I believe the question was asked in our interview process, do you understand what the job is? And there was an expectation that there was going to be some learning required, but there was also an expectation that it was limited. And at least for me, and I can't speak for the rest of the board, I'm sorry if I imply it was, but I think we, you know, we were appointed, I think, in September, started in September. And we are not assuming guilt here, but we have questions that need to be answered, investigations that can be implemented to make some determinations there in due process. So I support the motion. Any more discussion? All those in favor of the motion signify with aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Hey, Sheriff? Robert, may I ask you a question? Yes, sir. May I, may we be able to tell her that you will follow up with your special investigation? I guess we'll go. Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
When I made this motion, I did have in mind that we will need to appoint somebody in the interim to perform the duties of that office. I would like to make motion to continue this meeting till later on today, where we can get together, discuss a possible interim appointment of that office to fulfill those duties of treasurer, because I think we do need to put a treasurer in at least, immediately anyway, to perform any duties that may be necessary in the real short term, and then that would at least give us some time to assess the situation and possibly make another appointment for a longer term. What's that? So I would move to continue this meeting and further discussion on the appointment to, I think we can do it today, but I think we need a couple hours, maybe till four o'clock or so. Is that not going to work? No? I think we need to do it very soon, though, to make this interim appointment.
Let's continue. What do we have tomorrow morning? Tomorrow morning?
Tomorrow morning, you have a nine, a 9:30, and a 10 o'clock water compact, which probably will take an hour. So based upon that, 11:00 forward, or the afternoon.
Not too much.
It's fine. I would like us to make this appointment soon, but...
We need to have somebody down there to secure the office, because of the worries.
Okay, well, let's...
That's something I think...
Let's do its conclusion in the next meeting, whenever that is, which should be fairly prudent, I think. Does that work for you? Do you have to say, continue?
So you just want to withdraw your motion, or?
If it moved to continue, but the question is, what time?
I know.
I move to continue, but we were in discussion of what works best for everybody for time at the conclusion of this meeting. While we're going to continue, that doesn't, I mean, basically, I think we needed time to, somebody we appoint, we're going to have to inform of this possible appointment, so that's why I was wanting at least maybe an hour, half hour, because we're going to have to have some discussion, and then go talk to that person if we may appoint.
Is it temporary?
What's that? Yes, that's our discussion, is that an interim temporary appointment, because there are duties that may come up in that office, that we would need somebody there to perform those duties, so I think we need an immediate...
Big time.
Hopefully, this meeting goes quick, so maybe, how about, what time, what's the latest we can do it today, then? What that works for everybody here?
3:30.
3:30? Okay, 3:30 would be my motion. I move to continue this meeting.
Is there a second?
Yes.
There's a motion, a second to continue this meeting, to discuss the interim appointment in the Treasurer's Office for 3:30 today, pending further discussion. Any public comment? Dan?
I assume when you have this discussion, you're not going to consider any previous treasurers, because they all were accused of wrongdoing also. It'd be better not to have somebody that's already been in that office.
All right, thank you. Paulus?
As you head towards your break, I'd suggest that you look in the direction of your deputy treasurer, who is already down there. Thank you.
We don't have, all right, you said, we have a bunch of deputies.
We have a bunch of deputies, we don't have a chief deputy.
Any other public comment? Yes, so?
I would just like to ask, when you're in consideration of an appointment, that you maybe review employee files, there's hostile work environment things that go on down there, and if you put a hostile person in that place, it's not going to be helpful.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I want to go up there, Victoria Howell. I heard that previously you had made the decision to call in the Department of Investigation, I think that was during a public meeting, you all voted to do that, and now I've heard that they've been told not to come, like, when that decision was made?
I, first I heard it was on the news last night, so...
So, are they still coming?
I don't know, I can't answer your question. Does anybody know?
I didn't think anyone was coming here, I thought they were going to try and do something.
They weren't going to be on site.
Yeah.
At least, Margaret Nelson was going to do it remotely, telephonically.
And is she still going?
I did not hear they weren't going to do it, I heard they were going to delay it pending some of this being settled.
So they made the decision on their own? No one was in contact with them?
I don't, nobody on this board, it looks like, nobody on this board made that decision.
Well, according to Kay Gray, the head of the department, who was contacted, she said that she was contacted by someone from the county.
Well, I know Clarice has been talking to them, but I don't know how the decision was derived. Any other public comment?
Could you have a clarification from the state attorney general on the law, the writ of money? Did you ask her that?
On what law?
About the temporary, well, about the treasurer's. Yeah, the suspensions that he's put there, I want you to do it there. Do you have a state attorney general?
Any other public comment? Daryl?
I just want to agree with this gentleman back here, and ask if you consider somebody as objective as they can be to fill this position temporarily?
I just want to be clear, you called Dan Floyd the gentleman?
I don't know him, so I'm giving him the benefit of the doubt.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Any other public comment? All those in favor of motion on the floor, signify.
Aye.
Aye. All right, all right. We'll go ahead and convene our meeting for discussion, possible decision regarding the investigation of the Treasurer's Office. Mr. County Attorney? Can you give us an update of where you are and what you've done thus far?
Without being redundant on the communication I sent over yesterday, we are still in the process of setting some meetings to discuss with different agencies and firms.
The mic is not on, it's not closed.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. I'll start all over. Sorry, and I am still numb on, and I think someone paid him to, like, give me extra Novocain or something, because my jaw isn't working too well right now, but that's what I get for going to the dentist right before the meeting, huh? So, Mr. Chairman, as far as substance, I can't give you any further information than I provided yesterday. We have tentatively scheduled both by phone conference call and by in-person meeting, some meetings possibly tomorrow and definitely the beginning of next week. Making phone calls and such to get this process started, and those meetings will be with firms, agencies, persons that are viable candidates to conduct the audit and to conduct an independent investigation.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions the board has.
Thank you, Bill. Any questions from the board? Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, I guess one question I would like to know is, what are we here to do that, are we here to support what's been done by the county attorney's office? Because it seems like that's already been set motion, so what are we, what action?
Could I respond to that? I think this is administratively awkward, simply because this meeting was calendered before I made the decision yesterday. The landscape as to what was going on clearly changed on Tuesday, and so that's what we looked into, took a look at, and I made this decision that we have to get this removed. I actually think it would, hey, it's not necessary, and I'm not sure it really would be good for the board to take a position doing this out of the office of the county attorney and as the elected county auditor. Because there are accusations and a component of this that involve members of the board, I want to make sure that the board's not involved in directing the investigation, selecting who's doing and so forth. I think that removing it from the board, removing it out of the county, where it's just, it's going to be at my request that these things are undertaken. But even I'm not going to, my office will not be part of directing the investigation or the audit.
Jeff?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say, if we don't take action supporting this direction, I would just like to go on record saying, me personally, that I support the direction that the county attorney's office is going with this investigation, so...
Susan?
I agree, something that we try to get going.
Derek?
I would agree, and the statement would be that clearly the county attorney's, clearly the county, clearly the county attorney's office has authority to act independently of this board, and that is probably in the best interest... And that is probably in the best interest of both the board and within the powers of the county attorney.
I'm in support of this, because I want the nation to have a conclusion to the citizens.
Okay, um, is there any... Any public comment? Is there any? Michael?
Uh, I apologize for running downstairs with the sheriff a minute ago, and so I missed part of the proceedings. And I'm wondering if in terms of investigation, if the county attorney was asked if he is going to investigate the allegations made by the Bitterroot Star. That there were two... That there were laws, state laws violated by the treasurer already. And they amount to official misconduct, and I'm wondering if he's investigating that.
Any other public comment? Chris?
I think I'm at the right meeting this time.
You're always at the right meeting, Chris. I think Henry Kissinger once said that he walked out in the briefing room, and he asked all the reporters out in the room, and he says, "I hope you guys have the questions for my answers today." So you're always at the right meeting, please.
I've been listening to the concerns of a lot of people that I don't know the motivation, and I'm... But I'm sympathetic to whenever the public wants to know that everything behind everything. So, in order, I think, to restore trust, public trust to whatever segment has lost it, it might be helpful if, as I'd asked earlier, if we identify. It says that an investigation into all allegations made by Ms. Stamey during a public meeting on Tuesday, January twenty-first, two thousand and fourteen, it ends there. I think it's important that the folks that are concerned about those, the possible wrongdoings, that they know, as well as I would think the commissioners that have been, had the allegations laid against them. What does the county attorney's office consider to eat all the allegations from that meeting? Because I don't see them enumerated or listed, so it seems pertinent. And the other was, does the county attorney's office have to confirm the existence based on Valerie Stamey's written statement? Whether she has... The FBI is going to do a preliminary or full field investigation.
Thanks, Chris. Any other public comment?
I know. I have someone who called me, left a message, and I didn't bring it in, so I can get her name. And it's just reiterating a request for the FBI to be the investigators, because they will be free. That was a quote, and I can get to the name if I can get that out.
Okay, any other public comment? Okay, one more time, any other public comment? All right, we'll close public comment, and give the county attorney to answer a couple of those questions that I saw right now.
Certainly. I think probably the easiest way to handle this is if we look at the question, what allegations? There is, of course, unknown. One extreme is that this could end up being a criminal investigation. We don't know that. That would be the one extreme. In the middle, there's a number of allegations of involving policies and so forth. So we don't know what direction to take, but that's actually very common. So my intent in this quick statement I sent over to the commissioners yesterday wasn't to elucidate and list everything that's going to be involved, but to give an idea of what's going to happen. And my thought, put that in summary, would be, for example, we have a written statement that Ms. Stamey made public on Tuesday with these accusations. That would be the starting spot, similar as if I called the sheriff's office and said, "Hey, uh, my house got broken into last night." Oftentimes, that leads us to other evidence, other crimes, further investigation necessary. And that's kind of the way I view this, is we have a starting spot that we want to turn, invent a special investigator loose on. Here's the starting spot, this written statement that was made public. That may lead to other... This certainly doesn't say this is all that can be looked at, because any investigation can turn up other questions, other issues. And those need to be resolved. We have to get to the bottom of what's factual and what is speculation and just things that are being thrown around. I recognize the FBI has been talked about. I can confirm that neither the sheriff, sheriff's office, me or my office has had any contact from the FBI suggesting that they have or are undertaking an investigation in Ravalli County. As far as them being a viable candidate to conduct the investigation we're talking about into Ms. Stamey's allegations and that component. It's probably not proper for me to say yes or no at this point, because that's actually what we're in the process of doing, and I'm not identifying them. Saying we're in the process of reaching out and exploring who can, both as a practical matter, resources and time, and get it done now. Be someone who's an independent investigator or investigating agency or firm for us. So that's the process we actually are involved in right now. And I think it would be inappropriate to start listing out different people and tossing them in the middle of a public meeting at this point. And I'm sorry, the first one kind of went to Mr. Howell's question, too. I view that all is all wrapped into one.
My allegation will be investigated?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, yes. I view that all is the same thing of where it leads is where the investigation has to go.
I guess I... That raises a question in my mind. We just prior made a motion to do an investigation relevant to some of the accusations made by the Bitterroot Star. Relevant to concerns that we have regarding our responsibility under Title VII to supervise Title VII for twenty-one-twenty-one supervised. And there are a number of other statutory requirements set forth regarding the treasurer's office and the function of the treasurer. That those were... Those are elements of the, for lack of a better term, the employment actions we're investigating right now. So how do we dovetail for... Do we dovetail? How do we do what we have taken action to do and not get in the way of inhibit or hamper what your independent investigations are going to handle?
I guess I don't know that I know the specific answer to that at this point, Mr. Chairman, without getting some input from the auditors. My overall view is that there's a number of... Well, the audit, I think, is going to be very comprehensive. Our preliminary discussions with folks that have the experience and the resources to do it at this time. This is tax season for the folks in the accounting industry, so that's a consideration with those that have the resources and the experience to do that. It's a very thorough process, and I think that's kind of that initial step that may give you information into the investigation you're talking about. And they provide some baseline information for you anyway. What, which order those happen in. I need some input from the auditor, so we don't...
And I don't know that ours is... Our investigation will need auditor information. We're looking at the thirty thousand foot picture of what the requirements are that have been met, have statutory obligations been fulfilled in a reasonable manner. And that's, I think, where we're going. And I just... And some of those relate directly back to the Bitterroot Star's allegations, and I would think they would belong, at least in part of our investigation. But I think I just want to make it really clear, I want nothing to do with your investigation. I want as independent as absolutely possible from this body and from the county in general. And appreciate your efforts to move that forward in the next day's conclusion. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so is there anything else? Anything else from you?
Not for me, thank you.
All right, so are there any... Is there any public comment on items not otherwise on the agenda? Chris?
I understood the county attorney to just complain that the allegations that will be... The allegations that will start from are the ones that are captured in the written statement. Uh, the written statement is not necessarily what was the spoken statement on that day during that meeting. I think at some point you can anticipate somebody saying those, the written statements are not her charges made during, allegations made during the meeting verbally. We are back to the point where there will be a potential dispute as to what was said versus what should have been captured. And I think Commissioner Burrows knows where I'm going with this, and that I'm advocating that in the future, for all commissioners' meetings, we utilize the capability that's been purchased with the Civics Plus to have audio recordings done at all of your commissioner meetings, please.
Any other public comment on items not otherwise on the agenda?
Andy Rubik, I'm still waiting for an answer why you guys didn't check her references before hiring her.
Robert, go ahead and work for a second. Uh, can we go ahead and panel that right now?
Okay, so where are we at?
Uh, question is to check the background check.
Oh, there we end it.
Well, as far as I know, that we did the same background check we did on all appointed candidates, and we didn't see any red flags. What came up?
None of her illegal activities came up?
No, they did a criminal background check. Correct me if I'm wrong, Robert. We did a criminal background check and nothing came up. And all this other stuff that people are talking about is civil, not criminal. So that is why on criminal investigation, this wouldn't come up, that I understand.
Well, criminal, right. Suzie?
No, I just was getting confused.
I mean, I think that HR did the standard background check. He's done it for years, and because these were civil decisions, determinations, and suits, they don't come up on a criminal background. They don't come up because they weren't charged by law enforcement. And that's oversimplification, maybe, but that's my understanding, so they're not going to come up. I think there's going to be a discussion sometime in the near future about how we do background checks, what information thresholds we want to do, and in the very, very near future.
Was it just her enthusiasm that led you to hire her?
That, you know, we're answering your question if you ask, and...
Michael?
Uh, I'd like to comment on Mr. Hoffman's statement. I have a tape recording of that meeting. I can assure you that what was said by the treasurer that day was not exactly the same as what the ex-president of the planning board, Mr. Waznuski, immediately passed out upon the end of that statement. She appeared to be reading from a statement, but she took it with her and refused, as requested by the clerk, to submit that as part of her public record. And she refused with purpose and left with it. Immediately, the past planning board chairman, Mr. Waznuski, got up with a dozen or so copies of a statement that I suppose he prepared. I don't know the origin of that, except he distributed it. And what's in that statement does not match the oral statement that the treasurer gave. Certain things were not said that were included on that statement, so I don't know if they belong to her or not. Oh, and I would be happy to share this with you, but, you know, I've been asking you guys for a long time to record your meetings. The public spent their own money to provide you with a WebEx that you refused to use. I just think so much of this is shameful, your activities. And I... But I would be glad to share that with you, if you think you need it for some purpose or whatever.
Thank you, Michael. Kathleen?
Well, thankfully, Teresa was taking it. It's on, it's uploaded and verbatim, so it did not follow what was written. So you could download that and maybe capture that, save it, and look at it, so that you'll know exactly what was said and what was...
Will we add to the county attorney and their investigation?
But I think because it's physical also, it's...
Thank you, thank you. Yes, Mary?
Uh, Mary Gordon Hamilton. And to wrap up, I guess, what we just learned, what Kathleen Ristl said. I would remind the commission and the public as well that Bitterroot's concern for responsible government made a contribution of one thousand dollars for to get better to do the finalization on the camera work. This is over a year ago, and you still will not honor us with recordings of your meetings. Well, Shannon, I'm sure you can recover it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Michelle Paul. I just wondered if there was a planned interim to getting in an investigator or an auditor of how to protect the records that are allegedly misplaced and not being handled appropriately. How are those to be protected from removal or alteration during this time of decision making?
Can I respond?
Yes, please.
The... I guess there's two components to that that I see. One is there's an allegation, as I understand it, and I was in court during that particular meeting on Tuesday, so I wasn't here in person. I saw the written statement. I have not listened to the audio yet. But my understanding is, in general, there's an allegation, some files have been removed. So because of the practical matter, we can't secure files if we don't know where they are. So that would be looking for an absence of files. As to the security of what's there right now, we have to, as the board already did, was to decide how they're going to direct the security of the office and the building and such, and we have to rely on that.
I would also add to that that our IT director, he said he's making sure that the data is as secure as it can be on his end with redundancy. So, any other public comment? Heralda?
I have a question. I came in here two days ago to ask.
Can't hear you.
Did the October reports get finished?
No. Terry, can you speak up, please?
My question is, if future applications, would it be better to do an independent hiring committee to maybe alleviate some of the problems?
Statute's pretty clear on the process of appointing an elected office in the county, and that's now one of the options.
What's the last name?
Terry Newman.
I know!
You had your shot.
I know, but I want one more!
Okay, make it, please.
Okay, so I talked to Marie Christopher, and she said I could use her name, and another woman from the Tippit. She went in to get their money for the Tippit, the business, the Tippit. And she was talking to Valerie, and she said that Valerie had a stack about this big and this deep of files. And she said to these two women that she was taking them home. So I'm concerned that there may be a mixture of what some people are saying is going home and what Valerie might have taken home. So I just want you to be heads up. And Marie did say that she will come in and testify if needed.
Thank you. Any other public comment on items not otherwise on the agenda? Reg?
Mr. Chair. I'm just a little nervous right now. I mean, I... We've got a department down there with staff that has no guidance at right now, at this moment. So, um, that's just a concern. I mean, I know you guys are looking at an interim, but that's going to take... I'm just wondering what our plans are right now.
We've got a meeting for three thirty to discuss it. Today.
Any other public comment? Going once, going twice, closed. Thank you very much for coming.